Approval of the minutes?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of November 19th, 2013, December 3rd, 2013, and table the minutes for December 10th, 2013.
Second? Okay, it's been moved in seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Okay. Approval not required plans. We have the applicant Timothy Brown to combine two lots into one lot located at 148 and 154 Compass Drive, East Falmouth, BSS Design. Tom, you're on.
Tom Bunker, BSS Design, I prepared this plan. If you have any questions, they're combining two lots, you know, two undersized undeveloped lots, combining them into one, straightforward.
Does anyone have any questions on this?
Just what is the zoning in this area?
Yeah, I'd have to look on the plan there. It might be RA, it should be on the notes on this side there.
So it's agricultural? So what's the minimum lot size?
Forty-five thousand.
Forty-five thousand?
So it's in a zone two, which restricts it to one bedroom for 10,000 square feet, so combining it for a couple of reasons.
Gets more bedrooms, makes it a single-family lot.
Okay, any further questions? Could I have a motion?
Second.
Moved in seconded? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain. And then we have Robert and Rita Pacheco to revise lot lines between number 66 and Lot 1, Old Manant Road, East Falmouth, and that's Holmes and McGrath. Okay, you have any comments, Brian?
Yeah, it's a plan that simply we just continue the lot line. You see that they're eliminating the dotted line in favor of the dotted line? So it's not a subdivision or...
Looks like it, yeah.
So I believe it's entitled to your endorsement.
Okay. Any questions, Abrian?
I'll move it.
Second.
Moved in seconded? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain. Okay, then, we have a decision. The applicant, Woods Hole Golf Club, site plan review to construct a 5,000-square-foot building for golf maintenance and administrative facilities on 4.92 acres at 161 Coursehead Avenue, Woods Hole. Okay, Rich?
Move that the planning board vote to approve the application of Woods Hole Golf Club, Inc., under Article 39, Site Plan Review, as the zoning by law for a plan entitled Quote, Site Plan Proposed Maintenance Building Prepared For Woods Hole Golf Club, Inc., Close Quote, Prepared By BSS Design, dated December 3, 2013, revised December 6, 2013, Scale 1 Inch Plus 30 Feet, Following Findings and Conditions. Findings: Woods Hole Golf Club proposes to add a second maintenance to the administrative building of 161 Coursehead Avenue along with the associated parking drainage and landscape. Planning Board finds that the new building will be served by town water and private wastewater infrastructure. Board finds that the proposed parking lot would be gravel and drainage system will tie into the existing drainage system on the set. Furthermore, Board finds that the existing curb town will be utilized without modification. Board finds that staff parking will be consolidated at the new facility with no change to the number of vehicles per day, so no traffic mitigation shall be required. Conditions: Plan should be completed and approved, and the changes shall be reviewed by the planning board in the determinant of modification of this decision if necessary. Tuned to Section 248, Dodge 183B of the zoning by law, no permit for full or partial occupancy shall issue until the planning board is satisfied with the conditions of this approval has been met.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, is there discussion on this now? Questions, discussion?
I think they answered my questions last time.
My question was answered at the end of the floor.
Okay, so it appears everybody is satisfied, so therefore all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain. And we move on, discussion. Dr. Frederick Lowe, preliminary plan to subdivide three lots into four lots on 4.69 acres.
Madam Chair, 15 of Butler's notices were sent by regular mail on December 10th, 2013, and publishing dates in the Falmouth Enterprise were on December 10th, 2013.
For the applicant.
Thank you for the update. My name is Tom Bunker with BSS Design. Here at this preliminary subdivision plan for the doctors Barbara and Frederick Lowe. On this plan here, which is an excerpt from the Town GIS map of the area outline in green, the Lowway is a subdivision road which is approved, I don't have the plan with me, but 15 years ago maybe, creating this lot of Hammerhead and this lot here. Frederick Lowe and Barbara Lowe own this house. Andrew Lowe owns number 18, Lowway. This is just up south of Chase Road, and see, this is Route 28A here, so it takes up this, you know, large area in here. The bike path runs by it on the west side, so Dealey Lane, a couple houses, and this is the upper reaches of Mashapackwood Creek, which flows out into Snug Harbor, West Falmouth Harbor, down this way. Four and a half acres total, and this is other piece right here, which the Lowes will buy from, owned by Jim Bowen, or rather Tracy Bowen over here, that's part of the subdivision. Plan I've put together shows four lots. The roadway, see, has been changed from a Hammerhead turnaround in this location here, created into a 60-foot radius cul-de-sac, on which we can get allowed a 40% reduction in the required frontage from 100 down to 60-foot frontage. These two lots, 3 and 4, have 60 feet of frontage. Lot 1 has more than 100 feet of frontage, and Lot 2 has 124 feet of frontage. So the required frontages on there, the 50-foot minimum width for these two lots here, I just added these dimensions, there was one of the open items on the staff report, the lot width, 125-foot lot width circles on all four lots, minimum 50 feet wide here. There's an open, well, say the zoning is RB, 40,000 square feet required. They'll meet that, Lot 1 is 42,000, Lot 2 is 48,000, make that bigger to include the tennis court in this location, and Lots 3 and 4 are in the 53,000 and 55,000 square foot range. Made those bigger to sort of equalize the buildable portion of lot, well, as regarding the long parts of the lots there, pork chop parts. The, we're not significantly extending Lowway, just a little bit to make it the turnaround. It's 434 feet from basically the center line of Chase Road out to the, in there, so it's less than the maximum allowed 500-foot length, meets that requirement. Comment, first comment on the staff report, discrepancy in lot lines, and there are some of these, it looks kind of odd, GIS property lines, as I say, are notoriously bad, traced from some of the old assessor's maps. The heavy lines I have drawn on here are calculated and actually overlaid our work with the location of the houses on the GIS houses, so that's why there's some discrepancy in the property lines, but I have calculated it all fully, and certainly when we come to a definitive plan, it'll be calculated properly and fully at that point also. Let me see, some of the others, in this, it didn't show any proposed work on here, you know, we'll submit a list of all the waivers we're requesting, but basically we want to request probably quite a few, because, you know, we'd rather keep the road low-key gravel, I mean, it's pretty hard surface right now, although it's only about 10 feet wide, so we'll probably have to make some, rather than making the whole road, if it requires it 16 feet, we'd rather make widenings for passing, rather than, you know, widening at the full width will require cutting down a few of the trees along there, don't think it's quite necessary, but we'll, we'll take that up, you know, at the definitive stage based on your recommendations. For four lots, I'm sure the town, the water department will require water be put in. I looked at the town, the GIS, it doesn't show any water in there, there's no hydrant down there that I recall, but we're probably putting in all the required utilities, but keeping, we'd like to keep the traveled surface, the construction to a minimum. There is some drainage, and we'll, we'll do any extra, any other grading or drainage that might be necessary to keep it, you know, impassable and good condition. That's, that's, I'd just like to hear your comments, I guess, see how we should go forward before the definitive.
Brian, do you have comments before I go to the board's questions?
No, it's a preliminary plan, and there's initial assessments here of the four-lot plan, and maybe whatever some road improvements as the blocks go up to the road from 2 to 4.
Yes.
So you're probably looking at some improvements, you know, not putting that tree under. So, you know, except for the board, at this point, we're a preliminary plan, it's just that, it's a, either party, it's just, you know, give some guidance. Board should express concerns, here are comments. Otherwise, it's pretty straightforward, small subdivision in the west of Falmouth, so my sense is you don't have a full, full company, but you're probably more than a ten-foot dirt.
Rob?
Yes, Mr. Bunker, what is the, what is the setback required on, from the lot line and the tennis court?
It's required, as a structure, it requires 10, 10 feet.
10 feet, okay. Is that, is that shown there? I mean, are you, is that 10 feet?
When we get there, it will be, we haven't located the tennis court, but it will be.
Got it.
Will we be going on a site visit for this at any point? He's getting all choked up.
I would agree with the planner that there should be at least two cars should be able to go by, you know, one exiting, one entering, and like to see where the trees are and know what we're talking about, you know, how much tree we'd have to come down.
Rich?
I'm taking opposite view. I look at this as just another step towards Falmouth becoming Framingham, with all of these little formerly fairly good-sized parcels providing, you know, open space, trees, fields, and to put a paved, wider road in there would just enhance that process. I'd be with it as rural as possible, you know, but there are two sides to playing. There's the access issue, but there's also the issue of preserving character in this kind of, I, I must be, applicant really wants to put in a paved road, which we'd have to agree with, if he doesn't want to, I wouldn't support it.
Who said paved road?
Well, okay.
I just said width, so a car could come and go.
Still, you're cutting back, you're on a brush, cutting back more than you know. So you have to grade it, and, you know, eventually somebody moves in there with a lot of paper.
What's your estimate, Tom, as to the length of the road? I know that you, there's a question as to how long it is.
It is, from the center line, it's 430-some feet into, pretty much at the end of what's there now.
Any other questions at this point? Bob?
It would be four bedrooms per lot, so Lot 4 and Lot 3, we could have four to five bedrooms on those lots, is that true?
10,000 square feet per bedroom.
If, if they have town water, they can have as many as would fit. If they have wells, then that limited to one bedroom per 10,000 square feet. But typically, the town would require putting in the water and, you know, town water service. So there's really no limitation on it.
Any other comments?
Just a question. If I read this correctly, Brian, this, this is basically an A and R, by right, they're meeting all the existing zoning requirements.
No, he needs to figure a definitive plan.
So it's a definitive subdivision? Lengthening the road, okay. Is he actually going to put the circle in? Is that what we're seeing?
Not physically, but we'll create a layout that's 60-foot radius to create the required frontage, and we hope not to have to build a circle in there.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, thank you, Tom.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is the local comprehensive plan's subcommittee report on land use, and Jim and Bob were going to give this.
I can jump on that in a second. Okay. Okay, in our discussions about land use, we discussed geographical and meteorological change, which covers sea level rise, storm flood mitigation, nitrogen mitigation, and population shift away from the coast. We talked about demographic change, and these are all impacts on, on how land is used. Obviously, with sea level rise and climate change, land use is going to change along the coast. Demographic change, we're looking at the population, how is the population going to change with a lot of retirees moving here, a second home population, and where do we want changes in population to go? Where, how do we use land that's available in town to maybe shift populations, whether it's away from the coast, or whether we bring people closer to the center of town, where there are more services as a population ages? Economic change, planning for business growth, where do we want that to occur? Do we want to set aside more land for industry? Do we want other types of businesses to inhabit the town? And where do we put that? Zoning changes, we talked about parking requirements and business zoning, and changes to residential zoning to allow for single dwelling, family dwellings to be made into multifamily dwellings, some of the things regarding those. And I like to say that we, we plan not just for growth, but change. I like to use the word change as opposed to growth, because people acknowledge growth with us getting bigger and denser, more dense in population and things like that, where I think it's going to be more of change as opposed to just growth in size. We're going to grow in other ways, but basically, it's how do we use our land that we have available for the best use possible, and what change we will have to make in order to make these things that we foresee happen. Jim?
You pretty much had everything. The only thing I'd add to it is when we talked about growth, when we decided where we wanted to grow, we did limit that we wanted to do it along the, some of the existing transportation corridors right now, because if we're going to grow, we need to have public transportation, and we also are trying to anticipate where the sewers are going to go, so if we're going to put increased density into neighborhoods, we wanted to make sure we weren't compounding any of the pond problems, but I think you pretty much hit everything.
Rich?
How are we not going to grow when we, like in the plan we just saw, which we have to approve? We haven't seen that many of the past six years, but that's because seven years ago, the housing bubble popped, but now things are starting to turn around, the economy is improving, despite what people say about Obama, the economy is improving. We're going to be seeing more of these subdivisions, there's going to be more mortgage money out there, and we continue to let people, when the storms hit, we continue to let people just rebuild on the post. So how are we going to, how can we plan, not plan for growth? How can we not plan for population increase? I don't see how we can do that. I mean, it's another point.
That's part of what we're trying to do, Rich, because we're planning for greater density in certain areas, and maybe trading off less density in other areas.
We're going to have to do that by regulation in the morning.
Yes, we will, Rich.
Okay, we understand that.
One tool that I wanted to bring up, I left out.
Okay.
A very important part of this, and it's a long ways from being put together, but in order for any of this to be accomplished, we are talking about using the transfer of development rights, and we don't really have a bylaw that allows it now, so that's something we're going to have to do in order to accomplish these goals we're talking about. We are going to have to, that bylaw, you know, there's a couple of things, the sewer has to be paid, approved, the, the, no net increase in the overall town for the sewer, the net flow has to be increased, and then we have to decide where we want the growth, whatever areas that we have the capacity to handle, and one of the things we would like to discuss with you guys is the transfer of development rights as a, as a tool to accomplish that end.
The other thing that keeps coming up is how are we planning for growth? We think of growth as, as becoming bigger, but what kind of growth are we planning for? I don't know whether others read that or not, but in, I believe it was this morning's paper, about the year 2030, 60% or more of the residents of Falmouth are going to be aged 60 or older. How are we planning to accommodate an aging population? How are we planning to bring in youth to keep it an alive population? And a lot of this has to do with not only economic opportunities, but housing opportunities, and that's the kind of thing that we're discussing. And that's the kind of thing that we're discussing in the subcommittee that we will then bring back to you after we settle on some ideas and bring it back to you and get feedback on this.
And that's why that transportation part is important because senior citizens would be better served with better public transportation.
Yes. So that it's the ages of the population, it's the needs of varying populations that have got to be taken into account in land use too. And don't forget, we're looking ahead, way ahead in this timeline. We're not saying this needs to be accomplished in five years. We're looking 25, 50, 100 years ahead.
And one of, one of the things that we keep as a recurring theme too is the development where transportation is going to be, where the sewer is going to be, and also where we want people to be. If you consider an aging population, you want to keep them close to the amenities, close to the hospital. So it, the redevelopment of the 28A Davis Straits corridor is extremely important because if we do want to increase density or attract density to those areas, it becomes important that zoning allows for apartments over businesses. It allows for mixed use and those types of things that will allow for more affordable housing. I'm sure somebody who's moving to town doesn't, wouldn't mind living over a business if it's going to be affordable rent for them until they move here and decide whether they want to buy an existing house or, or build one or whatever. So that's an extremely important part of our discussion is the redevelopment, is we envision it and what we'd like to see.
Does anybody else have questions or comments on this report? Gives us more food for thought if you do. Paul?
What do you anticipate coming up with a report and what would that timeframe be from the subcommittee?
We don't know. This, it turns out to be stickier than the other elements that we've been talking about.
It's very difficult.
Yes. And we also anticipate meeting with the selectmen too to get their input on it because we're talking about some pretty big changes here and you need to have input and buy-in for these changes. We had thought, well, okay, we'll have it in time for a spring town meeting. Uh-uh. Now we're thinking, well, fall. And we're saying, no, because this just is bigger than that to do a good job on it. So I can't tell you what the final outcome is going to be timeline. I think that's a fair assessment, isn't it, guys?
Yeah.
Okay.
And as an element, we're going to have goals, policies, and action items. And I think a lot of the action items will be zoning changes.
It's as you've seen before with the other elements.
But you can come up with some kind of draft approach that you're talking about that we can review before we get to the end or something.
Oh, yes. Oh, definitely.
Yeah. We'll bring you the elements as we put them together.
Thank you.
Doug?
I would suggest that you try to work on the zoning changes, you know, earlier than some of the other stuff.
Well, as Jim said, the TDR is a biggie that we know.
Right. And also, they're going to be revising that zoning book, which is ongoing now.
Right.
So maybe that could be a more primary focus for now.
Jim?
Just as a comment, what we're talking about is developing goals and a vision. And they, what you're talking about there is the zoning changes be action items. So we're first going to say, look, this is the direction we want to go. And then it's not going to be up to our little committee to, to take us there. I mean, it's, we have to go, come back to this board, go to the selectmen, go to town meeting, and then, then we, then we start identifying action items similar to the way we've been approaching light industrial C. You know, when we, first, we established the district, okay? We were taking the longer view on it. So we're not going to be rezoning anything. That's not something that the local comprehensive plan will do. The local comprehensive plan is, I think we should rezone some of these areas. And that's it.
I understand. My point is though, maybe that can be the primary focus early on. It seems that we're in the process of changing the zoning book now. And maybe those could be the first.
We, we got to go through, get this board to approve it, selectmen to approve it, and town meeting, and then, I mean, that's the cart before the horse a little bit. I understand the need, yes.
If there's anything that you've identified.
Yep.
It'll go in the book now, right? You've got a year to, to get ready.
Yep. Okay. Moving on, the Historical Commission Demolition Delay Bylaw. And Brian, you're on with this one.
The operation will be tomorrow night. And one of the things that I guess the board did discuss last week, and being here, great, but one of the charges you received on behalf of the town meeting board, selectmen, was a very specific question. I guess the board had a fairly far-ranging discussion about the entire bylaw and what they want to see or not see or do or not do. I would just like to revisit this very specific question because if you want to address the concern of the petition, of this town meeting, the board closes, Jim, like, there was a very specific question, charge of the board to help out on this specific question about getting public input. When someone's seeking a way, when they're looking for something beyond, something by right, which is you sign up for demolition delay in your way of six months, then you get a permit, you want to truncate that six months, you ask for a waiver, it triggers a discretionary, somewhat discretionary decision by the historic commission. And the question was, how can we get public input at that end? And we put together this little, and we worked very hard on it, but essentially it takes the language from the zoning bylaw that this board's used for 23 years for site planning. And you should have this in your document. So I would like to be able to go and talk to the historic commission, knowing that the planning board, at least for this narrow question, can send a referral, this type of language we use, this type of language we can endorse if they use, so when they are going to entertain a discretionary, non-permit-type decision, this will reach out to the public and let them know that it's going to happen. And we can at least bring something to the spring town meeting to address some of the public's concerns about how this bylaw is implemented. If you want a more holistic look at it, or something we can talk about as we program time, your time, I think we'll get the very, very part here. This board has used this bylaw before and has dealt into it in the past, so it's going to be very new for me. So my ask, I would ask the board tonight to at least take a look at this language if you're comfortable sending a referral in regards to how to solicit public input. Great. If you want a law, fine. At least I'd like to be able to communicate with the historic commission.
Other comments? We had quite a discussion last week, as you know. Jim?
Yeah, I have no problem with their recommendation here, but I don't think, and maybe I'm reading something into it, but I don't think it's going to accomplish what they're, what they're trying to do because I believe it's in the wrong place.
Well, I, I actually drafted this line. They did do it?
I know.
This is what I put together just so they could solicit public comment under their waiver of delay. This is what they have to do. I'm pretty sure it's the right section. Do I check?
My only, my only comment is the, the problem, only because I was involved in what they were complaining about, there wasn't the delay that was the issue. What they were complaining about, that there was no public notice to a butters on the original application for demolition.
But that, there's no private property interests when someone is seeking to do something that's a matter of right. Just like if I do an approval not required plan, there's no public notice because you don't have property interests. You wait six months to get your permit. When you ask for a waiver, you're asking for a public board to make a decision.
Okay.
And that's when you trigger some form of public interaction. It's not a, not a hearing, remember, because it's not issuing a permit. So for that very narrow, specific question, when they're asking for a waiver, if this language makes sense. I'm not sure you can amend the general bylaw for demolition delay to alert property interests outside of general public considerations of the kind of public area, make you do something of the matter.
I'm, I'm fine with that. My, and I'm, I'm not even, but I just. The only, Richard, I'm going to just finish the same point and I'll let you go on.
Well, Brian wants us to hold it for a minute until he talks with, because there's a lot of feedback going on here.
Jim? I didn't want to cut you off. I just want to be sure Pat's coming, so that you know.
Oh, I appreciate it.
I've been seeing you, Rich.
I didn't see you wave, that's why.
So I don't disagree with you, Brian. I was just, having been involved in the process, if, what a developer could do is just never apply for a waiver and public notice would never be sent.
And that's something that, that's the more holistic look. If you want to take a mechanical look at how that bylaw works, that's okay. My sense is, no one has a property interest, and my larger friends will probably agree with it, and they may have to shake me on the head over here, that's not the question the board was asked to answer. I'm not sure you can actually do that.
I, I agree. I, I honestly think they need to talk to her because I don't think they asked the right question. And I was probably trying to help them do something they shouldn't have, but I think they're going down the wrong road.
But in this instance, when someone's asking for a public board or planning board.
Agreed.
Or a historic commission, you reach out to the public for their comments. That's a very focused question, which is very focused language for the next town meeting. If in November you want to make a more dissecting, more sophisticated, that's, that's fine.
I don't. I was trying to help them, and I'm going to shut up right now.
Rich?
I read the statute, the April statute of the historic commission. This stopping the language of the statute prevents the commission simply to public notice that demolition is not, period. Now, unless you're aware of some court ruling that says they can't do that, I would say the simplest, most direct way to accomplish this gets around Jim's concern and somebody just not filing a waiver, is just tell the commission that when they learn of application to malls, that they put it in the paper. Not, not notice, formal notice to a butters, property rights. This is a public event of a public concern.
And we're thinking about doing that for all permits, building permits. That's, that's different than a 40C historic commission, that's a, there's no statute. If I looked at them, this is a general bylaw under the rule of the, of the town, that the historic commission is the mainstream of it. If you want to publish permits, and we're thinking about doing that for various other reasons, in the newspaper, in the building department, the health department, historic commission, the planning board, that's something totally different, and the town's actually being elected.
That's the way to go. I forget this. That, that, all, all those permanent applications on public records, anybody can go down there and look at. So there's nothing that, that, unless you have a case from this prejudicial court that says they can't put it in the newspaper, that's what they should do.
From a, from a legalistic standpoint, you may be correct, and no one will be there. And no one will doubt. But people who get a letter in the mail, when someone's looking for a discretionary waiver, probably goes a lot. I understand the board's question. It's not the question that's kind of in front of you. The question in front of you is, is this the sort of language we want, where the historic commission must make a decision? Not once someone applies, that's the, the building department. The building department will actually publish those permits that they have received. As a historic commission, you can see that. And you're asking citizen volunteers to then publish notices and field the questions and all that jazz. So is this something, something you want to create the next town meeting, Brian, or not? I'll just look at the historic commission now. This is something you and I want to introduce at town meeting because we said we'd come back by then. Well, do you just want to publish a notice in the paper? Is there a command to sit?
If we're going to do, push something like public notice for, for all permits, including these permits, then this won't hurt. I agree with Jim. It's not necessarily going to help, but not hurt.
The, the issue is there's no permit being applied for. In fact, this stat, the, the bylaw says you can't apply for a permit, that you have to wait six months and before you apply.
He holds the demo permit for six months.
No, you don't even, you're not even allowed to apply for the permit. It says, it says it cannot. I'm very familiar with it. It says the applicant cannot. That's the language. It says he must apply, the file with the town clerk. Okay? And then it says, then it says the town clerk shall send a letter to the historic commission and the building commissioner. But there's no application for a permit. So this technical language we're happening, the six, all they do is file, wait six months, and we go ahead.
But, but there's nothing to stop the historic commission, from when they get that letter from the town clerk, from putting that in the paper. We got this letter. You know, that, and if you want to do this too, fine. I mean.
But we're, we're getting off like we did last week.
But right now, tomorrow, if, if, if an application goes or a notice goes into the town clerk, and that notice gets sent to the historic commission, I will send the record. As far as I can see, there's nothing in the statute that prevents the historic commission from then going to the enterprise.
They don't look like it.
Yeah.
Well, come on, people. I, I think we just need a yes or no.
Yeah. Is this something the historic commission wants?
Yes.
Okay. So if they want it, let's give it to them.
No problem.
Well, and also, we were asked to recommend this to the selectmen.
It's, it's this very specific thing about when someone's asking for a waiver, all grass and park next.
So what I would need then is if people are in agreement here, is a motion that we recommend this as appropriate to the selectmen. And that is, I believe, the only thing that we have been asked to do.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I move that we recommend this to selectmen as appropriate language for the waiver of delay.
Second.
I moved and seconded.
I would agree if a motion is stated that it's appropriate language for the purpose.
Fine.
Okay, I'll vote for that. If you don't agree with the purpose, Bob, put it's appropriate language for the purpose.
Okay.
We're going to have a discussion on this now that we've.
We can have discussion some more if you want to.
Just a quick comment. I think Brian's operative was, we were asked to look at this narrow issue. And that's all we're asked to do. So I think when we respond, we should refer to the fact that we only looked at the narrow issue and that the historic commission should look at, at the large implications of the zoning bylaw or the bylaw.
Okay.
Brian raised a point just now that I think we addressed last week. I know I brought it up, which is, this commission does not have a question. I think they should have part-time staff and a small budget.
But we can't get into that tonight, Richard.
Let's vote.
Okay.
Maybe before town meeting.
But that's off topic. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstained? All right.
That's a good point.
Okay. We move on to correspondence. There is one thing in the folder here. We did not receive a hard copy from the letter from Patty Haney and Ken Buckland. Oh, we did? Oh, this was not off of the, that wasn't scanned and forwarded? Okay. Anyway. This is in regard to a visit to the DHCD to determine the, yes, Paul?
If this letter had not been signed properly, I'm not sure we should be discussing it at this time.
It has.
It has? Okay. Because the copy we got in the mail was just, looked like a draft.
We got it signed one mail.
Okay. I didn't know that.
Yeah. Well, it just came in today, I guess. Okay. And you've all had a chance to read it, I would assume.
Yeah.
And I probably should read it for the public.
Yeah.
Okay. Dear members of the boards, and this has been addressed to Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board. The Community Preservation Committee, CPC, at its December 5, 2013 meeting, voted to request that representatives from the Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, and CPC organize a meeting with the Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, to discuss to discuss, excuse me, to discuss the feasibility of the Spring Bars Road Little Pond Affordable Housing project. The CPC feels this could and should be organized within the next 30 days. There have been questions raised regarding the effect on the project from the recently proposed FEMA flood insurance rate maps. The Spring Bars Road assessment study prepared by the Cape Cod Commission also recommends that the town meet with DHCD to receive guidance on flood zone effects on project feasibility and funding options. With this information, the town would then have the ability to move forward with a private developer, RFP, which at no risk to the town, would give the clearest indication of the project's feasibility. In moving forward with the town's objective to develop affordable housing, the CPC also requests, with its detailed knowledge of this project, that it remain closely involved in the process. Sincerely, Patty Haney and Kenneth Buckland, community preservation committee co-chairs.
I'd like to use this letter as an opportunity to address some comments that have been made to the press. I mean, first of all, we've been very maligned in the press. I mean, the word criminal has been used. And I think as volunteers who give of our time, that is totally uncalled for. They need to tone down the rhetoric and the name-calling. The comments from this board are the result of exhaustive research and careful deliberation. As a member of this board, I have attended conferences and consumed volumes of literature on the effects of sea level rise, climate change, flood mitigation, coastal resource protection, and coastal land management and planning. In other words, I've done my homework on this topic. It is also referred to as performing due diligence. The results of this study has led me to the decision that the location for this project is not in the best interest of the town of Falmouth. I appreciate the fact that people spend a lot of time on this. But I think, in light of all the information that has come forward in the past several years, I think we're being the canaries in the coal mine, and I think that should be heated. And if we need to have a discussion, it should be done in a forum where it can be discussed civilly, and not in the press, and not with name-calling.
Jim?
I don't believe there's any question. The Cape Cod Commission has pointed out if you really want to, and can it be done, that the project is feasible. But I think from our board, and from especially in a forward-looking in dealing with flood mitigation and sea level rise, it's not whether it can be done, it's whether it should be done. And I think that's clearly what, I will agree with them, that it can be done. If they want to turn a blind eye to what the government's saying about floods, our own conservation rules and setbacks, there's a way to do it. Whether, will there's a way, and it can be done. The question is whether it should be done. And I believe, everything that I've learned and everything that's coming at us about this, I don't think it should be done, that every time a town, we're going to have a cumulative effect from every single project that we approve, whether it's private or public. Everything is just going to be a little bit more and a little bit more into the flood plan. And I think we've got to start thinking about the cumulative effect and start drawing a line, saying, we're planning for the future, and some of these areas should be for flood plane, flood mitigation and sea level rise. And I don't think affordable housing belongs in the flood plane.
Doug?
I question the issuing the RFP. I understand their desire to go to the DHC and find out if it's viable in their eyes. That's reasonable. But once you issue an RFP, it's not just a test. It's actually, you're putting the project out there. So when you're testing to see if it's viable by issuing an RFP, it's not a test. It's the real thing. It's actually going to happen. And so I don't understand the logic of a test RFP, if that's what the position is.
Okay. Well, I'm going to make some comments specifically in regard to this letter. First of all, they say within 30 days. That's unconscionable at this time of the year, for starters. And I'll use a nasty little term there, unconscionable, because it is. We're in the holiday season. But beyond that, we were told that this can't even start until the sewers are in, which is four years from now. So that's jumping the gun to say we need to go to DHCD and get their reading on it at this point in time. DHCD probably won't give us a time of day, and the laws can change in that time. So, okay, we've read the letter. We know what it says. And furthermore, it's not our call on it. This would be the selectmen to act on it if they choose to do so. And however they choose to do so, whether it's via letter to DHCD, however they want to do it. I think we've made our sentiments fairly clear. As Jim said, it can be done, but at what cost? So we normally don't comment on letters. Ralph?
Well, we've already made comments on the letter, so I'm going to make one too. Being the planning board representative of the community preservation committee, I'd like to remind the planning board that we were the ones that requested the Cape Cod Commission to give us comments on this development. And their comments, the planning board did that, okay, through our staff. They came back to us and gave us recommendations on how we should proceed. So what the CPC is asking us to do is to follow up on what we asked this Cape Cod Commission's opinion on. So the community preservation committee is saying, we would like to go ahead with their recommendation. The first one is to meet with DHCD. And the second one, if it made any sense, would be an RFP. Going to DHCD gets another expertise opinion about developing affordable housing. The point about 30 days is the fact that we want to move the process forward. And when you say we would hope, I think, I believe the letter says something to the fact that we would hope that it could be moved, be done within 30 days. Well, that's 30 days after the planning board and the selectmen approached DHCD and get some kind of a date. Maybe DHCD can't meet that requirement. But...
That's not what it says, Ralph.
What does it say?
It says, "The CPC feels this could and should be organized within the next 30 days."
Okay.
The date on this letter was December 10.
Okay. Could and should. Okay. All right. So in other words, that's pushing it forward. If it can't be done, it can't be done. But that's at least requesting that we move ahead in 30 days. 30 days from now is in January sometime, and it's way past the holiday season. And so that's irrelevant. So I'm just telling you that the community preservation committee is asking the planning board to organize with the selectmen a meeting with DHCD and follow up on what we asked for, what we initiated. Okay? We, the planning board, initiated the Cape Cod Commission report. And now the CPC is saying, would you please follow up on their recommendation?
I remember Berkeley, we had a joint meeting with the board of selectmen back in April. And a few days before that, we received a draft report from the Cape Cod Commission. I think most members of our board read it. At that time, we never discussed it as a board. Individuals at that meeting made comments of that issues that were raised in that report. I made several, and each of us made several comments there. Now, fast forward a bit, and we had a meeting on the 3rd of December, I think, with the board of selectmen again. And at that time, they presented the final report, had figures and much more information, a little more specific information of things that have to be addressed. And it's true, they did say, you could do this. But they suggested going further and looking at other areas. At that time, we recommended going to DHCD to get their input. We suggested that at that meeting. I, too, am troubled, as Bob is, with some of the things I read about the paper, because I think in good faith, we picked up items that were in the commission report. I've worked for many years writing RFPs and responding to RFPs, and I know that you have to have a pretty specific RFP if you expect to get people to reasonably respond so that you can compare apples and apples. At this time, we do not have that. And a comment could be, if you want to move forward with a process like that, perhaps even a pre-qualification might give you an indication of what they're trying to do. But just to send a bellwether up and issue an RFP, one of two things are going to happen. No one will respond, or the responses will be so variable, you won't be able to compare them anyway. For example, if someone says, I put in $10,000 to deal with the flood issue. Someone says, I think it's going to be half a million dollars, and it's buried in bid, how are you going to determine those kinds of things? There's a number of other issues in there, too. I don't want to get into specifics. But I think it would be very premature, as Doug has mentioned, to issue an RFP, because you're asking the company to spend their resources to put together a concrete bid to do this work. They're not ready to do that because it's not defined. So I take umbrage of the fact that, let's issue a notice to proceed and see what happens. I think that would be very responsible to do that.
As Pat said, I think that's the shortening. There's too many variables that have not been determined for this area. Until those variables, not the least of which, sewer, have been resolved, and it's undefined in terms of understanding of what's going to be there and what's going to cost and so forth, it's premature to talk about any kind of development.
Or, I think, premature to talk about a meeting until we know what the purpose...
Yeah. We'll take a look at the coming out of a meeting when we don't know that.
So can we put the letter to bed at this point?
I would say so.
Okay. That's it. Does anybody want to bring up any future agenda items that they'd like to see?
I do. Several months ago, we talked about an issue in East Falmouth. I think Mr. Schmarzey was his name, where we, there were a lot of complaints on the development, and the town was going to send a letter to him and request that he address those issues by the end of the year. Or perhaps the town might consider pulling the bond. I'd like to see that item on the agenda to see what the status is, because the next meeting will be after the end of the year.
Uh-huh. I think it's Mr. Schamsey.
I can't think of the name of the development right now.
It's Mr. Schamsey.
Sunrise Estates.
And I've been having discussions with their attorneys, and we're hoping to see an actual application placed. Something will be on your agenda on the 7th.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anything else that anybody would like to see?
Is there any questions?
I don't think so. You could be here by yourself if you want.
Yes, but you are meeting.
At 7.
Next one is?
7, January.
This year's.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.